Okay, we ready to start? I'd like to call a meeting to order. Am I early? Okay, alright. We'll start with roll call. Pid. Price.
Here.
Longton. Here. Hema.
Here.
Duden.
Here.
Charnell.
Here.
And Slovum.
Here.
Slovum, huh, I'll get it. Okay. We need to approve the agenda. Any conflict of interest disclosures? Alright. I'd like to ask for the approval of the minutes for the April 8th meeting.
Second.
Approved by Charnell, second. Price. With that, we're ready to open up for public input.
Take a vote first, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please. We have a motion and a second. Do I hear a vote to accept the motion for the approval of the minutes? All aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, it's passed. Okay, now it's public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there any public input other than what's on the agenda? No? Alright. We'll move right on. And we'll start with the variance for 111 Dakota Street. I guess you're up, Dave.
Evening.
Evening.
Kevin Robinson, the applicant, the landowner is here tonight sitting behind me. So I'll just kind of introduce the request as I normally do, go through the application. If Kevin has anything to add or correct, we'll certainly allow him the opportunity to do it. Although we mailed out notice as we always do to everyone within essentially a block of the applicant's property and published in the Cannon Falls Beacon Notice of the Hearing, I don't see anyone else here, they maybe will wander in later. But I also did not get any calls from anyone regarding this application. Within the packet, I've included, just as I always do, the aerial photography of the neighborhood and get an idea of where 111 Dakota Street West is located in that neighborhood. Also included in the packet, a copy of the survey completed by Rick Samuelson earlier this year. And then I drew on to the survey itself, the proposed location of the garage addition. So on the west, the west side in dark here on the survey drawing is the proposed request for the garage addition to an existing garage which is located here. And then, of course, the existing house located just to the east. As I said in my staff report, lots in this area and including Mr. Robinson's lot is obviously a larger than normal single-family lot. And I raise that again under the variance provisions because we need to distinguish, if we're going to approve something like this, we need to distinguish the characteristics of this particular request to other similar lots within the city of Cannon Falls. This is a 1.25 acre lot, which again is considerably larger than the typical residential lot in Cannon Falls. And I went on to say in the report that while the larger lot gives plenty of alternative locations for maybe placing additional garage space or an accessory building on this lot, given the existing location of the current garage, the house, and the topography as you go to the south, to the backyard of this particular piece of property, arguably it's, there aren't a lot of alternatives for increasing the size of the existing garage. I know Mr. Robinson's working on this application for quite some time. We visited probably on and off for probably more than a year as he's been developing his plans for this. And ultimately decided that this probably is the best proposal for him to accomplish the addition that he's seeking. And with regards to the the building itself and the reason for the variance, you didn't have this in the packet, Kevin brought it to me tonight. But this shows the east-west location of the existing garage and then the north-south location and size of the proposed addition. The issue for the variances are two. One is that, as you saw in the survey, the west line of these new garage walls are virtually right on or very close to being right on the west property line of the site. And we need to have a 15-foot setback under ordinance along the west property line in this instance. The second thing is that the maximum size allowable for garages in this area total 1,500 square feet. And this would be slightly larger than that in the request. Again, the 1,500-square-foot limit under our ordinance, again typically was written for a standard residential lot, which is usually a 6D by 142-foot lot. That lot area with a 1,500-square-foot maximum allowance is probably reasonable. This is a much larger lot, as I said. Something else that wasn't included in the application but kind of gives you a visual perspective of what the garage would propose to be look, what the garage would look like or addition. Here's the existing garage again. And then here's the front as you're facing, facing north. Here would be the front door of the new proposed addition to the existing garages. Tying the roof structures in to make this work, I know has been a little bit of a challenge for Kevin and Interstate, but I think they've done a pretty good job of matching the addition roofs, given their varying dimensions, to the existing hip roof on the current garage. So that probably gives you a little bit of better understanding on what's being proposed here. And again, the variance is due to the limited setback along the west property line and the overall size of the structure if these, if this garage addition is approved. One thing I guess I should mention is Kevin brought in tonight, signed statements from these two property owners here along the west that will border this new structure that neither one of them opposes the proposed garage addition as it's outlined here. And of course, I mentioned in the staff report that if the variance is approved, it's probably going to be good for Kevin's best interests and the long-term interests of whoever might own this property in the future to have a maintenance agreement with those two owners. Otherwise, there's not going to be a legal way to access for maintenance purposes the new west walls of the garage addition. So that would be a recommendation here that we work towards that if the variance is approved. I guess with that, I'll stop then with my presentation unless there's any particular question that you have and/or if Kevin wants to add or correct anything that I've said, this would be an opportunity for him to do that.
I have nothing to add. Just if you have any questions, I can certainly answer anything that you have.
What is the width of the addition? I didn't really see that on your.
14 feet in the back and then it jogs out to 16 feet in the front. I originally wanted to go 16 feet the whole way. When I had the survey done, the property line runs at an angle and it's only four, just over 14 feet in the back corner.
Okay.
So that's why, to narrow that up in the back. Property line runs at an angle to the garage.
Oh, there.
That's the south, that's the south wall here, Mark, and there's 14 feet there. And then it widens out to 16 feet. The way that that's able to be done is based on the survey. The building is tilted a little bit now, so as it goes north, it would actually move a little bit further beyond the existing property line. So the solution here, again, as this has been in process, has been to build two widths, 14 feet on the south and 16 feet on the north to give them the space he's looking for.
And you have done a survey for the exact location of that?
Yep. And that's, you can kind of see it, it's a little bit tough here because the lines are so close. You can kind of see that the garage is really kind of tilted to the northeast and the lot line, let's say, is straighter north. So it begins to create a little bit more daylight or a little bit more separation from the west property line as he goes north. If he built a 40-foot addition, then, you know, he would, he would really be a little bit further distance away from that west line, just because of the way that it sits.
Right now, to the west of my garage, I have blacktop there and it's 16 foot wide. So the back, a foot and a half is actually on Lawrence's property. I found out when I did the survey, so.
I always tell Rick Samuelson this, sometimes surveys aren't always good.
Yeah. So the 1.5 on the back corner, is that what your back corner is from the property line then? Where they, he has it marked on the survey?
That's 1.5 over the line with the blacktop. The blacktop is 1.5 over the line.
Oh, I see.
The building will be on the surveyed lot, right? Yep. Yep.
What does the terrain do to the west there? Is it slope away?
Yeah. Heads down to the river a little bit.
Yeah, particularly over here.
The way the numbers are, it starts up and back down off over the hill.
I have about six feet behind my garage and it's really steep down to the river.
And on the west side?
The front half is pretty flat and then the back half slopes off.
It begins to come back down in here.
Yep.
Some of you know, maybe Colleen and maybe Jay not so much, but you recall, maybe, well, it happened before Kurt was on too, when the legislature changed the law with regards to variances. There's about two years where there were no variances legally allowable because of legislation that, and a court decision that prevented that. Legislature came back and went from what used to be a definition of hardship, anyone who wanted a variance in a zoning ordinance needed to prove hardship. And that was a test that could be met. It wasn't a slam dunk, but a lot of times if there were unique conditions on the property, a hardship test could be made. The legislature changed the law a couple of years ago now to go from hardship to what's called practical difficulties. It's maybe not quite as severe a test to meet under the practical difficulties as it was under hardship. But the way I always view it, and I don't have a corner on the truth on this, but what I always try to do and advise the applicants is if you come in and make an application for a variance, give me, give the planning commission reason to support your request under practical difficulties. What's different on your property than others in the community? What's unique? What's special? What complicates your ability to conform and make the case? And I think in this case, the size of the lot, the fact that the existing garage is there, I'm not making a decision as to whether Kevin needs 1,500 square feet of storage area or 1,300 or 2,000. That's not, you know, our call to make. But if he's going to make an addition onto his property for the additional storage space that he's, that he's looking for, I guess I've become convinced over the last year or so that this probably is maybe a more reasonable way to go about it than any other possibilities that he may have. It's kind of a tough fit to make here to get the property owner to the point where he's got the space that he's after and still meets the requirements of the ordinance. So I, I think the variance was probably the only way that this could be handled and I think this is a reasonable way, you know, to do it.
On the usage for the additional garage then, is that for storage and keeping things picked up and put away then? Is that the intent?
Yeah, I have a daughter that's going to be getting a car in the next couple of years. I want to get a collector car someday and I don't want a free storage for that.
It's not going to be Dave's automotive or anything?
No.
Garage Mahal?
No.
I have a garage at home that measures 18 feet by 21 feet. Too short both ways. I have garage envy on this one.
You can't even get your pickup there.
Any further questions from the commission? If not, I suspect we can close the hearing and you can take a look at Resolution 2013-3 if you wish.
Okay, with that, we'll, is there any other input? Any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll close this part of the variance request. Do I hear a motion on this?
This would be Resolution 2013-3, which you see, that would recommend to the City Council with the variance application.
I guess I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with okay on the variance.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
The recommendation will go to the council next Tuesday. Okay? And it will go on the agenda, but the council will always reserve the right to pull it down if you have discussions. So we still advise you to come to the meeting at 6:30. Okay? That's next Tuesday? Next Tuesday night? Yep. Alright, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, with this, we'll continue on. Dave, and it's Brewster's sign?
I've provided information to the planning commission from Brewster's for our conversation tonight, and let me explain why. Some of you will be familiar because you were here earlier this year and late last year when we talked about what's known as dynamic display signs. And we had some really exciting conversations at those, at those meetings for those who weren't able to attend. You may recall, or you may not recall, that the consensus of the commission at that time was that dynamic display signs, which really are changeable copy, they typically electronic, but changeable copy signs that would give differing messages or different images on an electrical sign, come to known as dynamic display. When we talked about that, the consensus was that those type of signs may very well be okay in certain parts of the community, but not necessarily citywide. Now, those recommendations have not been taken from the planning commission as yet to the city council because they're part of the sign ordinance, which is part of our zoning ordinance. So we've decided several months ago to hold off on dynamic display signage until we finish up with the zoning ordinance and the sign ordinance. So they're still sitting as a consensus of the commission and not purposely carried on to the city council. So we have no allowance right now in our current ordinances for dynamic display signs. We allow changeable copy signs for time and temperature and gas stations for fuel prices. That's it. Let me, and this will be maybe more for Mr. Lind and and the commission members who weren't here when we talked about this. This was actually a sign that has been approved and is standing today for Community Resource Bank, which has the sign and time and temperature. This we approved under our current ordinance. It's not a dynamic display sign under the legislative definitions that we were using, but it's a bank which is allowed time and temperature. I bring this up as an example because if we had the dynamic display provisions in our ordinance at the time that this application came in and we had not allowed time and temperature for banks, this sign actually would have met the parameters that we talked about recommending to the city council where we said that dynamic display signs, as a percentage of sign area, would be limited to about 35% of the main signage. So this sign would actually represent one that, from an area perspective, would kind of show what we had talked about earlier this year, that we're going to allow dynamic display signs, but they're not going to be the major part of the sign. And this would give you kind of a feel for what those might look like under the language that we talked about. This is not a dynamic display sign under the terms of the ordinance. This is the new Casey sign, which has been approved, not yet built. But there again, we've got fuel prices that are incorporated into the context of a larger, in this case, a monument sign. That's okay. That works. What we talked about with the commission, and I don't think there was any, this is a little tougher to see, I don't think there was any really dispute on this, whoops, on this kind of signage where we have, and you can't see it, it's in orange lettering here, but the electronics of the sign area are down here, in this case for a school, that talks about community events. That was the kind of sign under dynamic display that the commission said, you know, that's okay, the schools are okay, maybe the athletic fields, maybe a hospital's okay, and businesses out in the Highway 52 corridor. Those were the areas that we talked about as being generally acceptable to the planning commission at that time for the use of dynamic display. We did not include the downtown in the conversation. There was, there was discussion about it, but there wasn't a consensus by the commissioners at that time that dynamic display signs, these changeable copy signs ought to be allowed in the downtown. But again, that's a recommendation that's kind of sitting and waiting till we get the zoning ordinance done to go forth to the, to the city council. So we still don't have anything today for dynamic display or changeable copy other than time, temperature, and fuel prices. You saw in your packets, in addition to this, which is a dynamic display sign, I'm sure that's not what you'd be advertising on the.
No.
But it gives you an idea of the, the area of a sign, dynamic display, on the south side of the existing Brewster's building. You saw in a different document, a facade exterior renovation that Mr. Lind has been looking at doing on.
Did they all have this?
Yeah. You all got a copy of this? This is the, the west side of the building, the front of the building. This particular sign is on the south side, it'd be on the right side of the end of the building. The issues with the sign, which is, long story short, to get it to the commission, the reason I brought it tonight, the issues for this proposed signage is not just the dynamic display, there's two other existing sign ordinance provisions that could be at issue here. One is that, you may or may not know this, but this particular sign or the, or the south side of the Brewster's building does not face a public right-of-way. By that, I mean the adjoining property at the base of this wall is privately owned property owned by first farmers and merchants. So it's not a street, it's not an alley, it's not a public thoroughfare. Our sign ordinance limits signage to frontage, frontage on public right-of-way. This faces a private parking lot. That's issue number one. The second issue potentially, this was the other option that you saw included in your packet, was rather than having the dynamic display sign on the, on the south wall, it would be on the south roof. There's also a provision in the current sign ordinance that precludes roof signs. So if dynamic display or otherwise was going to be proposed as signage on top of the roof, our current ordinance does not allow that. So there would have to be a variance application to accommodate that. So the short of it is that I felt much more comfortable allowing Brewster's to come in and have some conversation with you as commissioners to gather your input and hopefully provide a little bit of direction to Mr. Lind and to myself with regards to, and I'll use what I guess is maybe the the one that would be in a little bit more conformance than the roof sign. To provide some direction here in that we haven't really taken a final, final position yet as a city on this use of dynamic display signage. If dynamic display signing was going to be allowed, then there'd be the question of what about in a situation like this where the south wall doesn't front a public right-of-way and a variance application would have to come in? Is this something that seems reasonable? Is it something that you're generally comfortable with? Not looking for a commitment, just really looking for, for some direction on that, so.
Do we have an approximate size, Dave?
This is 33 inches by 66 inches, I think, so it's about 15 square feet. Does that sound right, Dennis?
33 by 5 feet 9.
Yeah. Yeah, so about 15 square feet. So it's not a huge sign. But again, if that was an alley that bumped up to the south wall, they would be allowed signage on that alley frontage under our current ordinance. Not this particular sign, but they could have a wall sign in that location. They could have a projecting sign in that location because they're in the historic district. But they couldn't have this sign because it's dynamic display and because it doesn't face, you know, the public right-of-way. So there's some ordinance limitations here with regards to this kind of signage and I think we just wanted to have some conversation with the commission tonight, kind of gauge feels, some direction. You can certainly add anything that you'd like to my comments.
Well, I guess I'd just like to point out why I would like a sign like this. It's programmable for inside. We'd be able to put our lunch special on there during the day and at roughly 5 o'clock we could have it switch to what our evening special is or if we have something special going on that evening. It wouldn't be flashing or anything. It would just be basically stating what the evening special is or what the daily special is. The reason I'd like to have it on the south wall like that, and I prefer the wall versus the roof, provided that is high enough so somebody walking down that sidewalk next to the building can't reach up there and purposely damage it. And I think we're going to be up high enough if we go right there, I'm not sure. But the reason I wanted to go on the south wall is anything in the front of the building, people don't have time to even see what's there. If it goes right around the corner, facing across the street, by the time a car driving down can see the sign, they're going by it and you don't have time to see anything. Or here, once you come down the hill, you've got about a half a block to a block of visibility. There is a tree in the summertime, but you get beyond that. So people actually have time to read what the daily special is. We're looking at putting, in my mind, a lot of money into totally remodeling the front of the building to make it look a whole lot better than it does. And that would also include redoing this side of the building. I don't think that shows on the drawing. But the roof would be re-roofed and all that siding would be redone to match the new siding that's going to go on the front of the building. And I guess I'd like to be able to get something up to get people's attention, to try to bring more food business in, to try to recover the cost of the expense of totally redoing the front of the building and the side of the building. We have no, like I say, the, the front of the building to try to put something on the front, it just doesn't give people enough time to read it. We do have a sidewalk sign we put out during the day, which I don't even know if they're legal, but I think the city's been putting up with them. There's a lot of people in town that have, there's a lot of people in town that have them to try to advertise a special, but there again, you get no bang for that. If the, if the cars are, if the street is full of cars parked, sometimes you can't even see it unless you're walking. So I guess that's my point, the reason I'd like to get, to possibly put something like that up is to advertise what's going on. I'd like to be able to change it once a day so that during the afternoon, we've got our lunch special and then like I say, at 5 o'clock, it would switch. Point out what the evening dinner special is and if I had a comedy night or something, whatever the date and the comedy or whatever it might be. Anybody have any questions?
Would it continue to run all night or what's, what's your thoughts on that?
I believe, I guess I don't fully know, but I believe it could be programmed so at a certain time of night it would shut off. I was certainly thinking maybe.
I would think so too.
Under our initial discussions about signage, we talked about, you know, the brightness, if it's too bright, that can be an issue. And then the other issue I think we talked about was that running, running script, you know, where constantly is moving, that was another issue that we talked about that seemed to be a little too distracted.
When I started out, I wanted the running script and I wanted the, where on Thursday tacos and tacos and flash up.
Yeah.
You could have fireworks and whatever. But I was kind of told that that probably won't fly. So I cut back to one where it's just the lettering.
What are.
It would not be flashing, it would not be scrolling.
Right.
It would just basically say what it is.
And can you control the intensity of the lighting if it bothers somebody? If it gets too bright for, I don't know what, who, there's no, nothing there with a parking lot, so it's not going to bother anybody there.
It would still, I mean.
Have to get approval.
Because of its location too, to the highway and potential glares, so yeah, there'd be control limits on lighting too and the direction and the intensity.
Right. The, what are our. The, uh, what are our rules about, let's say, moving the signage to the, so that it hangs from the front of the building instead of on the side like that?
Projecting signs in the historic district are allowed. As an example, the Cannon River Winery has a relatively new projecting sign.
Right.
Those are allowed in the historic district, and they're allowed in the B2 districts, as I recall, by conditional use permit.
Is there a, just, just curious, is that something you ever considered, was having it project from the front of the building, or?
Oh, that would be better, yeah. If that were possible, because now it's, now it can.
You can get it both sides in.
It'd be both sides, yeah.
But it might, yeah, just curious, why you didn't consider that?
Yeah.
The front looks great. The design looks great. Oh, yeah. That guy? Yeah.
You sure are. It's going to be really short.
Are we sure?
Well, I just wanted to say how we got to this point, because initially, when Danny asked me to do some drawing, um, I'm not real fond of the big tarp Budweiser signs. And I thought, we've got to get rid of those signs. If we're going to spiff this place up, we've got to come up with something other than those big signs. And I know that every bar in Minnesota and Wisconsin use them, and it's basically to say, we got tacos on Thursday, or we got, we've got a Domino's tournament on Tuesday, whatever we have. And in an effort to get rid of those, um, I replaced it with, with some electronic signs on the front. But then, you know, Danny's feeling was that they're quite small and not as visible as he would like. So that's how we got to this piece. It was basically a, an effort to eliminate the big Budweiser things.
If we put the projecting sign out the front, is it the same size, only twice as big, or do you have to cut the size in half to meet the requirements?
Well, right, right now, and this is, this is going to be changed probably in the new ordinance, right now we're limited to eight square feet for project.
It would be half of what we have there.
For projecting signs, yeah. So that, so if, if there was a design of a dynamic display changeable copy sign that was a projecting sign, if that could be designed in the front or the west side of the building, right now it would be limited to the, to the eight square feet. Again, I, I see little doubt that the eight square feet is going to be recommended to be larger.
It's not going to accomplish what he wants to accomplish either. This is quite a bit better.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's a, I, I don't know what the design options are for this kind of sign in a projecting format, and how that would fit on the facade renovation that's being proposed here.
The other thing is, if we, if we, if we get down to like eight square feet, it really doesn't leave much room to put what your specials are. Thursday tacos, dollar eighty-nine, fajitas, whatever. You really have no, very little room to try to get things in there where it's large enough for somebody to see it, unless it's scrolling again, and we don't want that.
Yeah, because we know even with, and it's, and it's a little bit of a challenge in the historic district, because again, our sign ordinance, like most cities, is based on frontage, height of building and, and width of building on the frontage. And if you look at a winery-type building as one example, that's, that's a very wide or long structure on, on Mill Street. An eight-square-foot sign is not much for that kind of building, but if you get a narrower building of, of perhaps twenty feet, or, or maybe even sixteen or, or fourteen feet, eight square feet, fifteen square feet, twenty square feet proportionally wouldn't, wouldn't fit so well. It's too big. So there's always that, that challenge in the historic districts where you have buildings that share walls and are, and are, there's densely developed in a, in a downtown space. And in our space, unfortunately, or fortunately, we have two highways. We've got moving traffic. So it is kind of a sticky wicket to make things fit in the downtown, irregardless of, of, of this particular type of sign, just to, just to allow our sign areas to work with varying buildings that we have. But what that would do, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily a, a great design decision, that's not my role, but what that would do, it eliminates if there's a sign on the, on the frontage on, on the west side of the building, fronting the highway, now we've eliminated that, that issue that we've got on the south side where there is no frontage. Is it better? I don't know.
I guess the other thing I'd like to point out, that current sign that's on the front of the building, as you can see there, which is lit, it's a lit sign.
Can't hear you, could you, is the mic?
I'd like to point out that that current sign that is on the front of the building now, which is a lit sign, it's backlit, and we're able to go up and put changeable copy and stuff on it, but that sign is coming down, so that would no longer be in existence. And on the front of the building would be this sign that Dennis has drawn in here, which would not be lit, it would just be like a wood background with plastic letters or something.
Great.
So the one, the big lit sign that's on the front now would be gone.
Is it something where, like the previous person came in with a letter from the neighboring property, since the property line runs up to the corner, and that's not actually an alley that runs up there? Would that help his case, then?
I think, I think of.
Stating that it wasn't going to be a problem?
If, if an application was made for a variance on the south side of the, of the building, like we saw with Mr. Robinson tonight, if First Farmers and Merchants came in and said, now, we're not really concerned about that, that certainly won't hurt. The, the, the issue we have in the downtown location that we don't have with Kevin Robinson's location is again, the historic overlay district. That's, that's the other issue here. So it's not as, i- i- it's maybe not quite as clear that the most affected property owner, in this case, the neighbor, First Farmers and Merchants, if that sentiment necessarily would represent the sentiment of other property owners in the downtown for this kind of signage in that location. So it gets a little bit more complicated.
I guess my opinion is with what he's looking at doing to the rest of the building and cleaning it up, and the appearance that he's putting on, that, in my opinion, I could forego some of the other.
Restrictions.
I was going to get.
Restrictions.
There's a lot more, lot more good here than.
Yeah, I think, I think we're benefiting a lot more than what the sign is going to hinder in the long run.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I think as a whole, it's going to do a lot for the community overall, just cleaning up the appearance.
Is the space too small up above, I mean, that flat area that's in between the roofs, or is that considered a roof sign?
Uh, that's too small.
It is, okay.
Twenty, twenty. I think there's only about thirty-six inches.
Oh, is that what it is?
Twenty-eight inches, something like that, that's all there is there.
Yeah. Yeah, that area, but obviously the.
What's the dimension?
Vent probably didn't help either.
The sign is thirty-three.
The sign is thirty-three, and that's the actual size. So it's going to be, also get twenty-four.
Yeah, okay.
Was up in St. Paul? I don't know.
Who, who was running it, since I was late?
Who started the mess?
I started it.
Did you?
Yeah. Good job.
Well, I think, just, just reflecting back to the conversation that the commission had, and we talked about dynamic display in general without a specific proposal, I think a lot of what Mr. Lynn has said, has said tonight, addresses many of the concerns that we talked about with this type of signage, when we didn't have one in front of us to deal with. So I think that's, that's good. Legally, if we can control the message, we'd want to confirm that if, if Mr. Lynn does come in with an application, or before he comes in, we want to, I would want to confirm with the city attorney that restricting the message to menus and, and as was kind of laid out here is something that, that legally we can do, and, and that we can enforce if we need to. I'm not saying that Mr. Lynn won't follow his word, I'm saying that one of the issues that we've always had with these signs is, is we have little ability to control messages. So we'd want to affirm that, I think he would want that as well.
Publicly acceptable text, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because we talked about that.
And he said events and, and that type of thing, too.
Yeah, yeah, so we'd, we'd want to work that out, I think, and that would be consistent with what we talked about before we had a, a sign before us.
Yes.
The fact that it would be not a roof sign, but, but a wall sign on the south side, I think that's, you know, going down the right road in terms of this kind of signage. We could certainly talk, or Mr. Lynn could certainly talk to, to First Farmers and Merchants and kind of get an understanding from them if, if they would have any concerns or not. I think if there's going to, if there's going to be any backlash at all from anyone, it's going to be, are these the type of signs, not this particular one, but are these the type of signs that ought to be allowed in, in, under whatever conditions in, in, in the historic district? I think that's, that's where the questions will come. If we go to public hearing, we'll find out. Or you will. Or we will together. So it sounds like to me that, 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 just listening to the conversation between the two, and having been here before, that Mr. Lynn wasn't at, it sounds like he's going down the road that would be more consistent with the conversation that we had in the past about this kind of signage, even though it's in the, in the historic district. And if we can get some legal opinion on the control of the message, if it's on the south wall rather than the south roof, that really the only other issue is, is the variance to not face the public right-of-way. And I will say, as I said earlier with Mr. Robinson's, is I always look for what, what makes these kind of proposals different from the guy or gal across the street or down the block around the corner. I will say that this is kind of a unique situation. I, for years, thought they faced the, the alley, but I, I learned from Mr. Wolf that, no, they don't face the alley, that's actually First Farmers and Merchants land there. So I think there is, there's something a little bit different in this location from, from a lot of other, most other locations in the downtown, where it doesn't face the alley, or it doesn't face the street, it faces a piece of privately owned property. So I think, again, if, if it came to a variance, there's probably reason to, to, to believe that, that if we needed to, we could work through that issue, at least in terms of the practical difficulties, because it is, I think, a little bit different set of circumstances, so.
There's not four other historical buildings on the south side of that that he would be causing problems with either.
Good point.
Well, and, and again, because they don't know this, maybe, maybe Dennis does, because I think he's been here on other issues. I, I think clearly what this commission tries to do is look at the, as the proposals as a whole, rather than individual parts, and, and trying to make those reasonable trade-offs. And what I'm hearing tonight is that clearly they're impressed with the design of the facade, and would hope that you could go ahead with the improvements on the building, and in return for that, maybe it's reasonable for them to consider looking back at the ordinance in your proposal and seeing if there's a way to make some adjustments. That's what I hear. And, and that's pretty consistent with the way that they've.
And that's what I want to know, I don't want to, I know I'm going to have to come up with, I think it's four hundred and fifty dollars to request the.
Yeah.
Stuff, and I don't want to go do that if there's just no way it's going to fly.
If you quit beating Greg Wolf at golf all the time, maybe he'd be a little more.
And I, Greg Wolf is pretty excited about this, too, I think, and I had mentioned the sign to him one day, he never said anything, but I'll make sure I talk to him the next day or two, and ask him if they have any problems.
And again, just, I'm not mediating, but I guess I am, just to be clear, because we'll tell this to any applicant, I think you've gotten some favorable feedback tonight, but until the application is made, and until we hold the public hearing, and until we go through the detailed process like we did earlier with Mr. Robinson, you got to kind of gauge the, the feedback and, and make that decision. But I didn't want him coming in knowing what I knew about our conversation about dynamic display earlier this year.
Yeah.
Because if I went only on that, he wouldn't be here.
Well, I think it puts it in a different context when you are seeing it here, and we talk about the actual sizes of the, the sign and, and those types of things, that I think it's a little more clear than the theories that we were talking about.
Right.
I think maybe we should have more definitions besides dynamic, though. When I think of a dynamic sign, I think about those that they're constantly moving all over the place, and this isn't going to do that, except for a few minutes in, in the morning, a few minutes after lunch, maybe.
Yeah.
I've seen some gas prices move awfully quickly.
That's dynamic.
Before I hit the end of the parking lot, you know, change it again.
And there again, I mean, that's, that's kind of the new territory that we're, we're up against here with signage, and again, I think the, the leap is, if, if we can, if we can protect the edges of that leap a little bit with some, some legal parameters on, on the message itself, and we're not going to have the, the true dynamic display sign with the fireworks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that if there's some limitations on the message, that, that would probably be a, you know, something would be more consistent and compatible with what, you know, you've heard and what we've talked about before.
I, I just have one question, maybe Danny can answer that. Would this sign and its, depending on the brightness of it, how would it affect the residents on the north side of Park Street?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if it would be a factor or not.
I don't think it would. I don't know, on the north side of.
You know, the side that faces, would face the side of, of Brewster's.
Yeah.
It'd be like what we did up at Rapp's, where they turn the lights off next to Mrs. Kimmis there.
Well, yeah, and I was mentioning.
That's the same thing we were talking about here, that it can be turned off at a certain, you know, at midnight or one o'clock, when he locks her up, you turn them off.
And that was kind of my thought process, because I was remembering that, that we did on that.
We had the brightness, the, the brightness threshold, even in that draft ordinance that we talked about, so whether it's this sign or anyone else who might bring a sign like this in in the future, there's going to be that ongoing monitoring if there's an issue to, to the impacts to the neighbors.
And I think the neighbor is directly on the corner is the apartments.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then kitty corner is the church.
That's. That's a bright sign.
Well, yeah, and that's, I'm just asking the question because.
Yeah.
Generally, older folks, they might not.
They'd help you out, or?
I think so.
Okay.
It sounds like I won't totally be throwing four hundred and fifty dollars away if I.
We hope that.
Well, that's, that's why I came here. I mean, if, I, I would, I would hope that if everybody was just totally against it, that you could tell them, you don't waste your money.
I think your four hundred and fifty dollars would be a good investment.
Yeah.
And we've got two councilors here, these two will consider whatever recommendations would come from the planning commission. Almost without exception, planning commission recommendations have been accepted by the council, but until we go through.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
You want to take over?
I sure can. Yeah, the mic's on. So we had already done the Dakota Street?
Yes.
So we're, next is Historical Society mural.
Good evening. Quite a number of you know who I am, Steve Dabalo, third generation Cannon Falls, so I've been around a while, and I'm representing the Cannon Falls area Historical Society tonight. And we're going to be proposing a couple of murals for Cannon Falls, and I'm going to just set the background a little bit about, you know, who we are, what we're trying to accomplish, and how this came about. You guys have a little bit of a portfolio there, but the mission statement of the Historical Society is that the goal of the Cannon Falls areas, area Historical Society is the preservation, the study and sharing of our heritage, and then informing young and old alike that history lives in all of us. And so there's, there's these two things, and as I've currently the president, and as I've worked with the board and volunteers, we talk about the preserving, and then we talk about the sharing. And we've done a good job over twenty years of preserving a lot of the history. And we do most of our sharing at the museum, but we need to get out into the marketplace a little bit. And so the discussion tonight is about the sharing side of it. Now, I don't know if I know how to make this work, and this is going to be sideways, but about three years ago, I was down seeing a client in Heartland, Minnesota, and across the street from her bank was this mural, which is actually painted onto a concrete block wall. And if you ever get a chance going down thirty-five W and you see the exit for Heartland, it's just five, six miles. When I got done, I must have sat and looked at that for about thirty minutes, and I thought, my, you know, we got the same buildings and people and stuff, different faces, different shapes on the building, but if you spend any time at, inside the museum, that's all we have is pictures that are a lot of fun. So that was three years ago, and that started rambling around in my head as I drove around. By the way, I missed something I wanted to share. The goal of these murals is to get. The goal of these murals is to get our program out into the community where the people are. The second goal is to incorporate these murals into the walking tour that we already have. Although it's gonna be rewritten, the chamber is all out of the books and we're developing a new walking tour. If you've ever been downtown, you'll see pictures with numbers in it. But thirdly, and this is the, the biggest, is that this has the potential to help make Cannon Falls a destination for a lot of the people that are looking for something to do out of the cities. We get a lot of visitors that come into the museum. Sometimes I'll work a shift on a Saturday and I just say, so how do you find us? And they were just looking for a day trip out of the metro and, and the museum is one thing that they wanted to stop at. So we've got a historic downtown district, as David said earlier, and we think these murals can really help with that. Anyway, so this stuff started rambling around in my head. And then as I drove around Cannon Falls, and you've got it in your brochure, I'm just gonna put one in here, is that wherever I went, I just started seeing walls. Ugly. And I don't mean that, but just walls, you know, everywhere and stuff like that. And, and so, you know, started thinking about stuff. There's another one for the people that are at home and stuff. And so after seeing a lot of these walls and working down at the museum a lot, and this is just so much fun, that's the first house in Cannon Falls. There is a craft standing in there. I don't think there's a Duncan though. I don't think there's a Duncan in it. There is there? The way you're looking at me, uh-oh. Okay.
No, no.
I'm, I'm not the director. This is one of the favorite photos that we have. It's the most asked for and is real popular. But I see these all the time. Our walls down there are just full of them. This happens to be out at the Big Falls before the Billsby Dam was built. There was about a, a three and a half foot cascade and that's just in front of these ladies. And this is their summer clothing. They're out on a Sunday afternoon. And then the ladies that brought lunch and coffee out for the guys during the threshing bee. I used to skate down there. I really love this photo, you know. So I'm seeing all these photos and I don't wanna spend a lot of time on it. Well, then as I drove around and started looking at all the walls and having all these photos in my head, I started seeing the photos on these buildings. Now, this particular one is Burkhart Law Office. That is the north wall. What's interesting, if you drive by there and look and you get over there, the white only goes so far and the rest is gray. And the historical reason for that is the gas station used to be there and it was a movie theater, it was only painted that far back. And when the Johnsons had it, they painted it that far back. And when Burkhardts have it, they painted it that far back. But that little park over there, the Cannon Falls Rotary Club has sort of adopted that and started rejuvenating it and cleaning it up and cutting the stuff back. And one day when I was working out there, Jim Burkhardt said, hey, Steve, you're doing such a great job in the park, can you paint the wall? And we've had some conversations. Do you guys know which wall that is?
Yeah, that's.
Back to the winery.
That's the warehouse for Eltoff.
Yeah.
And what's really interesting about it right now is, you know, it looks like that right now. But we have an awesome picture down at the museum. It's actually about four foot long. I don't know how they did that back in the day, but it's of a threshing bee. And so we had that photoshopped onto there. So we've got these ideas of, you know, putting maybe some murals up to get some of the history out of the museum into the marketplace where people can see it and think about it and stuff like that. And then the question was, how do you proceed? Well, I started asking around, just started asking people, what do you think about this? And everybody I talked to liked it, sat and visited with business owners. But where do you go first? Do you go to the city to get permission? At the time, we had no concept of how we were going to fund this. We're not asking for any money. We've got a grant, that's what's sort of pushing the issue right now. We need to get in front of you for timing purposes. I'll know on the grant Wednesday of next week. It's with the Southeastern Minnesota Arts Council. It's about a ninety-five hundred dollar grant. We may not get it. This is the first time I've written a grant and I may have to redo it and submit it again next year. Don't know. But if we get the money, we'd like to paint some murals, two of them in Cannon Falls. One on the warehouse building. The, the shrubs that are in there would be pulled out. These are gonna be painted on. On this building, the siding's gonna be taken off. There's gonna be a, a, a concrete board put up and then framed and then the siding put back up and it will be painted on there. And so who does the painting? Well, I visited with my client in Heartland, who was on the Historical Society when that mural was put on and she introduced me to that artist. And then we've had him in and Dennis has had a couple of times to meet that artist. And he's really good and he isn't too expensive and his resume is in there. And he's done other murals around southern Minnesota. So I had to go to my board and see what they thought. And find out where we're gonna pay for it. You know, who would paint it? Does the city really want it or not? What about the business owner? Okay, the building might be owned by somebody and the business in it, somebody else. So this has been going on for about two years where we visited. But Jim Burkhardt, can't wait to see one on his wall. And I call him Ollie, but John Eltoff. Those of us that are old enough think of his dad, I call him Ollie all the time. Is very excited about having one on his mural. What I like about this one is it faces the parking lot where all of the people that come biking. For the people that drive through town, they're gonna get a great look at the Burkhardt wall. I do know that it's important for cities. If I was on your board, you have to control what type of mural might go on a wall. I have got all types of ugly murals. And so that's real important. But we see this as pictures from our museum collection. It also keeps the cost down. Black and white, very historic, with stories. We've priced brass plaques that would be done probably at Gemini, just like on the monument of, of Coville, where it tells the story of what's going on. Part of the grant process is that there'd be a capstone event. That thing in your brochure that says capstone, that's where that comes from. Capstone is the people giving the money really wanna see participation. Well, the artist will be inviting some of the high school students. I don't know how they're gonna be selected, but Dennis will be part of that. He's on my board. To come and partake with some of the, how, how do you paint a mural? You don't actually just paint the picture. You have to do things certain ways so that they look right. And then there'll be some other participation. But at the capstone event, we're timing it with a chamber event. We're hoping to have a lot of fun with it. The artist will be there talking about the process of doing it. My director at the museum, Zach Wareham, will be there interpreting, you know, what the picture's about and where it is and stuff like that. We're hoping, again, this is the big picture. In fact, I just talked to a gal that has done some work for the Guthrie about getting some college students that are into acting to put on some late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds clothing and take on the character and talk to some of the people that are coming or going and maybe some music. And the greatest fun of all is that one with the threshing bee. I've already got two farmers that are in their mid eighties that still wear their bib overhauls when they don't come to town, that can't wait to stand there and tell people about what was going on at that threshing bee. So the long and short of it is, these are being described a little bit as gateway murals because the, and they're in part of the historic district, but they're coming down from the north, you see the Burkhardt coming in from the west. You see the Eltoff building. And we're only proposing two. Might there be a third someday? Maybe, but we don't wanna think about it. We don't wanna talk about it right now. Because Dennis and I were just talking, baby steps. We wanna see how this is perceived and how it's going to work out. You also on there have a bunch of websites. I took a look because I was in Ottawa, Illinois, where they have a series of murals. And they've made a big production out of it. And that'll be part of our walking tour and on our website and lead us up. The images haven't been decided on one hundred percent yet. Any questions? I'm sort of just having fun. Oh, come on, guys. Yells. We're really excited about this, if you can't tell. I have available a couple of copies of a legal document that Ottawa made available, the Historic Society there, that deals with all the issues that the building owner is gonna wanna, you know, have control over, but stuff that they can't do. But the, the easiest thing on this is that if it doesn't work or ten years from now they start to deteriorate or there's no money or no interest or something like this, I've got gallons of white paint and I'll come and I'll paint them over, you know. It's not a hard thing to reverse.
Just mentioned to the, the commission too, that the, the process, which of course is your role here, is murals are allowed currently in the, in the sign ordinance by conditional use permit. That would be the process that the Historical Society would, would pursue to get permission to do this. Brought Steve and Dennis in tonight because if the grant is approved and the money is allocated for this project, there is gonna have to be a conditional use permit issued for this. It's possible that with a grant award, that there could be a public hearing on this at the next meeting in June of the Planning Commission. They'd be looking for your recommendation to the city council so that they could then with assurance go ahead and, and pursue the, the contract for the painting, for the creation of the murals, et cetera, in a timeframe that, that corresponds to the, to the grant itself. If the grant funds aren't awarded, as Steve said, maybe it's next year. There's no reason to get out ahead of this in terms of a conditional use permit process, but that's what the ordinance, you know, requires. So I felt it'd be timely tonight to have Steve and Dennis come in and kinda let you know that this is kind of in the works. This is what's being considered. This might come your way. And if it does, again, trying to get a little bit of preliminary feedback from the commissioners on, on the idea.
Thank you.
I think it's very, very positive as far as it goes. And, and I think the examples of the walls that are available are also quite. I think one represents the post office, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the, the one that would really be nice is the south, or the west wall of the post office. And I know Jim Bowen real well and he was very receptive. But we ran that past the post office and that was a real fast. No way, okay. Now, we may do that again sometime. But it, there was quite a dance with all the different, you know, the building owner, the building occupant, this or that. How do you go through the city? I was glad Dave was receptive when we had the first talk about that. One thing that I didn't mention is that when we started talking about this around to some people, all of a sudden people started suggesting walls. Why don't you do this, do that? And of course, one of them is the north wall of the VFW, you know. And I don't know if that would be a good wall for a mural, but that was a wall that came and was suggested. And one that someday maybe, I don't know. But as the trail goes underneath the Mill Street Bridge, the center pier, the east wall of that has the potential for a gorgeous mural. Although we talked to the artist about what would you do in case of flooding and something? And he said it would have to be more of a mosaic, but, you know, that stuff can be done. But there's no proposal for that. And the concern is, is that we, sometimes less is better than more. So it's gotta be done with a real artistic, you know, concept. But then again, one of the things I put in the grant application is, I'm gonna try to get Jason Davis down to do some of the filming where the artist is painting and then come back for the capstone event and stuff. But I go to cities now that have murals, now that I've got mural on the brain.
It's a great idea. It's a non, it's not a controversial theme. It's a wonderful theme for the city.
At what point, what level at the post office did you get shut down?
Uh, like right away.
It's the government.
Yeah. Well, now, now, yeah. Now, there's a concept that I shouldn't say here. One of the phrase I learned in business one time is it's better to get forgiveness than permission.
And the post office might not be around that much longer.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
They don't work Saturdays anymore.
There may be a chance to repropose that and repackage it after they've seen. When you start looking at murals around every place else, there's a lot that are, are very artistic, you know, and colorful and stuff going along. But, you know, I, I've gotten really hooked on using actual photos from our collection. And I had, is a show of hands, anybody been in our museum?
Not for a long time.
Okay, yeah. Aren't the walls awesome? You could just stand there and look at those pictures. They just talk and talk and talk and talk. And you look at the faces. We want people in some of these. But the, the, the one, I don't have it up here, but the one that's photoshopped onto Burkhardts with that little boat by the mill pond, okay? That is the Mill Street Bridge up above. And that is the dam for the, the mill that was right there. So that mural, uh, image would be within a block of where that photo was actually taken.
I like the idea of the informational placards too, of the description and what's, what there is.
You have to.
A lot of the cities that you go to, and a lot of times when I go to Arizona, I go down through southern Kansas. And almost every one of those little towns has two to three murals of Wyatt Brothers gang. Jesse James has got one there in Missouri. And there's, there's a lot of stuff and they're pretty interesting to go through. And they got their little museum with it and everything too.
Well, even the.
There's a lot of history there.
Even the, the winery.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Dennis wrote the ice.
No. That's very hard.
Once we got it up.
Yeah. But there, there is a paragraph. I was gonna read it and I, I don't know where it is in my pile. But it, it says in that, uh, legal document is that the business owner cannot use the mural as a promotional item per se for their business. They can, they can, they can content it in, in their, in their promotional stuff, but they can't use the mural itself as a, as a draw. When the coffee shop was in what I call the old dealership building, because on the north side of town, my dad was in that building, but Burley's or whatever name it was last. They, they were, the, the, the business in there was really excited about getting a mural. I never got around to talking to the business owner, just, just what do you think, with this or that? But there is the concern that what type of a mural would you put up there? Now, I did, that orange wall that you see in the pictures is Cycle America. And for those of us that are into the history, the really fun part about that wall is that used to be a popcorn stand. And the whole community, it wasn't a wagon, it was a stand. There was an actual building right there. And even though they sold popcorn at the movie theater, which is where the law firm is right now, people congregated around there. And the original owner of that was a guy by the name of Fat Sloman. And he loved to sing and some of the young guys around town, before there was a lot of music and, you know, CD players or earbuds and all that type of stuff. The men used to hang around the popcorn stand and while they're waiting for the girls to walk by, they'd harmonize. Well, Fat Sloman formed a group called the Four Errors. And it was my dad, Tody Kramer, Don Groot and Fat Sloman. And then Fat Sloman dropped out and Boba Gorman joined in. And then the Four Errors evolved into the Melodons. But they started by singing at that popcorn stand. But when I asked Cycle America about who owns the building, would they be interested in a sign? There wasn't a lot of reception. And then two months later, they put their sign up on the wall. But it looks a lot better. The wall looks better with their sign on it than it did without. So like I said, there's been a real dance going on with the community and it just, don't wanna push anything down anybody. There's another wall that I would love to have a mural on is across from the winery, or as I call it, Lee Chevrolet. At Mill Street is that big black, brown, brown corrugated thing. And we have a beautiful picture of that area when it was a lumberyard with horse and wagons loading up. But the building owner is not interested at all in any way about discussing a mural and that's cool. But we're just, you know, so we've got two business owners that are really excited. We're gonna stop there and hopefully get the grant and see how that works.
Just got a couple.
I, I'm, there's probably nobody more cautious about murals than me. And the problem is that when they're bad, they're big bad. So you're really stuck with something large. And from your point of view, I was just kinda putting myself in your position. A nice thing here is that by photoshopping it on a building, you pretty much know exactly what you're getting. It's not gonna be like, well, if we would've known that. I mean, what you're, what you see is what you're gonna get. And, and I'm really impressed with Steve DeLeche. Steve and I had.
He's the artist.
Right.
Steve DeLeche.
We've had some time with him twice. He's done a number of pieces around the Owatonna area. And he's really. area, and he's really, really a pro, and, you know, so we've got examples of his work and, and a really specific image. You didn't have either of those with me. So, it makes it a lot easier, I think, for you at some point to decide, you know, show us what you're going to do, and then make a decision on whether you want to go that route or not. Anyway, we'll see how the grant comes through, that's-
I think as long as you stay with a non-controversial subject, you're just fine.
Yeah, they're pretty-
And we're not asking for much.
Like my grandpa used to say, we don't talk about politics and religion at the supper table.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item D, zoning code rewrite.
I want to make a little more exciting topic for you tonight, so we'll talk some zoning. I just want to comment on, when I first saw those murals from, I still am astounded that those are painted. I just, and I've seen some of the, you know, better images that you haven't seen tonight, and it is fascinating work, it really is. I think it would create some real interest in the downtown, it'd be kind of fun to see that, so. But zoning, what I handed out tonight, we're not going to go page by page, line by line, word by word, unless you'd like to, which I'm not seeing anybody wanting to do that. Performance standards, we've gone through some zoning districts, the R1 district, the R2 district, the C1 district, the C2 district, the industrial district, we've gone through those districts, and what the performance standards now are kind of the cleanup, overlying standards that apply to all districts in the community. So, when we talk about nuisances and bad neighbors, and this, that, and the other thing, those typically aren't legislated on a district-by-district basis, they're legislated citywide. So, these performance standards are more addressed at all properties within the city, not whether they're just residential, or commercial, or industrial. So, again, we don't have to go through each one, but I will say that our current ordinance also has performance standards, but I think the verbiage and the length and the description and the interpretation and the enforcement goes probably further than it probably really needs to. So, what these performance standards do is, is really get down to much more simply stated conditions that would allow us to cite a violation, or allow us to look at some complaint and say, you know what, that's covered by this particular performance standard, that's illegal, we'll clean it up, if you don't clean it up, we'll enforce it, da-da-da-da-da. So, I think it gets to the same end, it just doesn't take pages and pages and pages and pages and pages. There's a few pages here, but it's not a book. So, I'm just going to kind of just mention a couple of things in particular, and they're going to be things that you really don't have to study because you know when your neighbor's doing something that doesn't feel right, doesn't look right, doesn't smell right, and it isn't right. And probably in these standards, if you as a property owner brought to my attention, there's probably authorization in these standards for us to do something about it as a city, and that's really what we want to be able to do in zoning, is make sure that property owners respect their neighbors, and they can get along, and they're not doing things that are offensive, or doing things to diminish the value of your property. That's really all we want to do in zoning, and this is what the standards get at. Item B is lighting, we talked a little bit about lighting tonight, we have performance standards and signage that deal with lighting, we talked about that earlier. There's also performance standards that really kind of regulate your right as a property owner to illuminate your yard if it affects your neighbor's yard as well, and we can say, nah, it's too much, you got to tone it down a little bit, and these standards allow us to do that. Item C on page two, noise and vibration. Noise is always a difficult one to enforce because you have to measure it, and, and once you measure it, it has to be above a certain decibel level, and if it is, you can tell the person, the violator, that they're illegal. And oftentimes, what happens in noise is we hear it right now, and by the time we get around to measuring it and trying to enforce it, the noise has either stopped and gone away, or it's not to the point where it was as loud as it was when you made the complaint. So, noise is kind of a tough one, but again, if you're living by a neighbor that's doing things that are loud, you have the right to call the city and say, boy, is there a noise violation here? If there is, can we get the neighbor to tone it down some? So, there's noise. D, smoke, particulate matter. Odors, and E. Noxious matter, and F. Radiation, and G. If you can think of bad things, it's probably covered in these, in these standards. The next page, heat and humidity, if you're, if you're a residence next to a commercial industrial business, and they're producing something that's creating heat and humidity, and it's, and it's offensive, it might be a violation that would be covered under, under these provisions. So, through J are really kind of the bad things, you know, things that happen on properties that maybe are offensive and, and create discomfort for those living around the violation. Item K gets into the landscaping requirements, and believe me, these are stated much more briefly than our current ordinance, and maybe that's okay, maybe it isn't, that's something you'll have to weigh in on later. But there's still some standards in here that talk about size of trees that are used for landscaping. Again, think of commercial parking lots that, that have a lot of impervious surface, maybe curb and gutter, blacktop, maybe they're going to landscape with some trees, kind of soften the, the impact of the parking lot. There's going to be standards here, there's standards in our current ordinance that specify types of landscaping, size of plants, that would be acceptable to be incorporated into a, into a parking lot situation. And those aren't that much different, they're a lot less specific than our current ordinance, but they still get to the point of, okay, if you're going to be required to provide parking, you're going to be required to provide some landscaping, and here's some standards that are going to guide the preparation of a landscape plan that the city will review and either approve or reject. So, that's the landscaping. The next page, fences, my personal favorite, Bruce is laughing. I've, I've taken out the basic, basic standards of our current ordinance and incorporated them into the state template. So, we're going to have some height limitations on fences, six feet typically, in a residential neighborhood, side yard, backyard. This provision on the next page, item C four, talks about no fences in the front yard. That would be different from what we have right now, we allow four-foot-high fences in the front yard. If we wanted to continue to allow four-foot-high fences in the front yard, we would want to change that provision. But right now, the state template says no fences in the front yard. I'm kind of so-so on that one, but that's, that's in here, we can deal with that before we move forward to adoption. But otherwise, the, the regulations for the fences in the residential areas are pretty similar, six feet in height, set two foot off the property line. We've got a provision on our ordinance now that says you can build it on the line, provided it's a, a, a no-maintenance fence, a chain link. Put a chain link fence right on your property line now, because that's a quote-unquote no-maintenance fence, but if you want to put in a cedar fence, you got to set it two feet off so you can get by and maintain it, like we talked about with Kevin Robinson's garage today. Unless, if you want to put a cedar fence in, but you don't want to have it set off two feet, our current ordinance still allows you to go and get a legal agreement that you would sign as a property owner, your neighbors, your neighbor would sign it, and the city would approve it. No one's done it as long as I've been here because it's not the most practical way to conduct business, I don't think. We don't have that in this, in this set of guidelines. So, you're either going to set it off two feet off of your property line, if it's going to be a wood fence, let's say, or a, or a fence that needs maintenance, if it's a no-maintenance fence like a chain link, then we should, you know, add that language back in here, but that's something we can, we can think about. Off-street parking and loading, there's really not much difference in here, except if these pages unfortunately aren't numbered, you've got to go to item C, it's two pages in on the parking, special off-street parking requirements, you see that? Right now, we have no parking requirements in the downtown, so if I've got a vacant lot, and there aren't many of them, but if I've got a vacant lot, let's say I've got the old Lee Chevrolet site that the winery owns, and I own it, and I want to build a building there, I can build a building there today and not be required to provide parking. In, in the state template, there's a provision, which I'm kind of so-so on, says if it's an office building, and it's built on the Lee Chevrolet site on Mill Street, it's in the historic downtown, it's in the C1 district, there's no parking required, except that in this provision, it's an office building, I don't have to provide parking on Mill Street, but if I've got a side street where my employees can park, I've got to be able to have that kind of parking available. If it's not, then I've got to provide it on my site. We'll talk about this one, that one's kind of a, yeah, I don't know if I love that one or not, but, but that's what the state template does. It also says if you've got an industrial use in the C1, which we really don't in the downtown, in the C2, which is now the B2, we do have some industrial uses there, and what that says, again, if you're an industrial use in a C2 area, current B2 area, if you own C2, you would have that same provision under the other, under the state template to be able to provide not parking right in your, front of your business, but, but on the side yard for your employees. I'm not sure how we enforce that, that's kind of a sticky wicket on that one. So, we'll, we'll think about that, but that's in here. Off-street loading, those really aren't changing all that much from what we've got. The next page, that's, starts the rural residential and agricultural district, I'll leave that for just a minute, but, but these performance standards, don't spend a lot of time on them, but take a look at them, and I'll kind of watch out as we move forward with the final draft, I'll kind of watch out for some things that I know have been kind of issues as long as I've been enforcing the ordinance, the current ordinance, relative to parking and fences and that kind of stuff, and we'll maybe talk about those things when we get to the more difficult task of going through the whole ordinance before we recommend it for adoption. So, again, I, I've tried to incorporate things that I think work well out of our current ordinance into this new template, I've kind of chosen not to include some things out of our current ordinance in this new one that don't work so well, and there's some of these other things that kind of fall in between, but it's not life-or-death kind of stuff. But I think, again, as we talk about these things, if, if we think that maybe the language isn't going to work because that hasn't been our history, that really looks like that's going to be a problem in the residential district, or in the industrial district, or in the downtown district, we'll talk about those things and make adjustments. I'll say this again and again and again, that, that no matter what we do with the ordinance, we're going to continue to have non-conforming properties in our community, that's just the way it is, there's no perfect ordinance. We've got a lot of non-conformities now, in new ordinance, we're going to have a lot of non-conformities. Maybe we'll have less, maybe we'll have more, I'm thinking less, but we're going to have non-conformities that will be created as a result of new provisions. That's okay, and we talked about that for the Southeast Campus PUD, the new hospital zoning area. Tell those property owners what you've got there today, you can continue to use, I am enforcing some stuff out there now, but we'll talk about that a different day. But what you can allow, you can continue to use your property the way that you used it before we adopted the new ordinance, and there's really nothing we're going to do to enforce that, and that's okay with these non-conformities. So, we're going to have it with the new language, too, and I'm not going to lose any sleep over it, I'm not going to go out and look at, you know, 500 parcels in town and do a code analysis with the new code on each and every one of them to kind of say, well, gee, here we've got these 10 that don't fit, so now we should change language right now rather than deal with it later, I'd rather deal with it later. So, we're going to miss some along the way, but that's okay. So, that's the performance standards, again, those overlay across zoning districts, they're in addition to the, the, the district regulations that we've already talked about in our residential and commercial districts. The one district that we didn't talk about before, and it's now here for the first time, is this rural residential and agricultural district. We've got districts right now that are kind of along these lines. One is the rural estate district, which, maybe we got one area that's owned that. And then we've got urban reserve, which is what we have for properties that are annexed to the city, or properties that we maybe don't know what to do with, or the property owner doesn't know what to do with, we zone them as, as urban reserve until such time as they develop into something else. The rural residential district would, would replace then our, our urban reserve district and our rural estate district, so we've got 10-acre minimums here. It'd be similar to the zoning that applied with Leon Hansen's new house, where he's got a 12-acre site that he, we did administrative lots split from property that Dr. Molinar owned. Leon Hansen was allowed then to build under the urban reserve zoning, in this case, 12-acre family home. That's kind of the, the, this would be the zoning that would, would apply in, in a situation like that. Or, again, the properties that are annexed, when Jeff Griffin annexed 25 acres on the southwest side of town off of 52, that's been annexed in as an urban reserve, until such time as, as he or whoever owns that property in the future comes in and asks for rezoning, submits a preliminary and a final plat for development, asks for utilities, it just sits that way, and really, nothing, nothing happens. Like on Sandstone Ridge that we rezoned to urban reserve there. It's, it's kind of a holding zone, property owner really doesn't have many land use rights, they can put maybe one house on there, on every 10 acres, but, you know, it's not an urban development, and that's what this, this district would do then. So, this is really the final zone then that we would have in our, in our new zoning ordinance. We've got the R1, residential one, the residential two, the commercial one, the commercial two, one industrial district, the rural residential district, performance standards, and then we've got our, our river ordinances, the flood plain, the wild and scenic, the shoreline kind of stuff, which is state mandated sorts of things, but, but the rural residential's kind of the last of the, of the zoning districts. Andrew did put together a map where he took the new zone districts that we've talked about, and he, and he put a new zoning map together using the R1, R2, C1, C2 industrial districts, kind of changing some of our existing zoning districts. I didn't bring it tonight because there's still some things that I'd like to try to work through before we bring that to you, and the big one is still the residential business district, okay? That's still on Andrew's map, is still as it is. I want to take a stab at, like I told you before, at, at taking neighborhoods out of that big residential business district and see if we can make them fit as C2, R1, R2, industrial, see if we can make them fit under these new districts that we've got, and then come back with a mapping that shows that, and if we can't make them fit, then maybe we'll have to talk about, well, what are we going to do with that big residential business district area? If we're not comfortable rezoning that to R1, R2, C1, C2, industrial, rural residential, if we're not comfortable with that, maybe we're going to have to come up with, with a new zoning district to meet that. I hope not, I'd just as soon not do that, but I'm just not quite comfortable with what we've been working on so far. So, I think we're getting close, you've gotten a lot of pieces here. When we bring the whole ordinance back, hopefully it fits together along with a map so that we can go to public hearing, and then after the public hearing, make a recommendation to the council either to go ahead with what we've come up with, or whatever changes we might make through the hearing process, but see if we can move beyond then the current ordinance into the, into the new ordinance. And it seems to me like it's coming together a little bit quicker than it was before. So, enjoy your reading, and I'll expect detailed reports at the next commission meeting.
Yeah, you'll get it.
Bruce, when you look at the fence stuff in particular? You can have an expert on that.
You got to finish the other half.
You might be able to do it now, I should check.
I don't want to cheat. Already dug those holes.
That brings us to Planning Commission member comments.
So, Dave, we will have a chance to discuss the grandpa's situation in the future?
I, I can give you a report on what I've done so far. I was able ultimately to, to talk to the owners of the property, and they explained to me what it is that they wanted to do and what they have done in the property. There are some office uses out there now that legally they can continue to operate out of that building. They have a new office user that I believe is coming into the building, and that's okay. So, the office use in that property is fine, and I, and I've told the owners that. I've learned a little bit more about the, the trucking operation that still doesn't fit, obviously, the ordinance that we adopted, and I'm, and I'm kind of working through a couple of different scenarios on, on how best to address that. The most recent conversation has been that, given the level of activity that's going to occur out in that area, the physical activity, the, the construction of the interchange, the construction of the hospital, I've had some conversation with the attorneys, some conversation with some other folks, including the owners, about putting- with some other folks, including the owners, about putting, they as owners on record that the use is inconsistent, is not allowed with our current ordinance, and to give them a sunset date, a reasonable sunset date, to cease that use, or come in and ask for a rezoning or a zoning amendment to make the change. That's kinda the road I'm on, at least at the moment, but it's only been in conversation. I'm not overly excited about forcing them to come in with an application requesting a rezoning in these instances at this point in time to allow that kind of use in that zone. I don't know if that's the best solution, at least at the moment. So we're in conversation and evaluation stage. The owners kinda understand that we've been looking at this, they know it doesn't fit, they'd like me to tell them that it does fit and go away, but it doesn't look like that's gonna happen anytime soon, and so we're gonna keep working at a solution that hopefully can make some sense and move us forward.
If you did do some type of a sunset date, would it be coinciding with the opening of the hospital then, so?
I think that would be, in my view, David, that would be the far end of that window. I mean, clearly not beyond that, but I think working backwards from that date, the interchange and/or the hospital projects. Again, I think there's some circumstances at play here that don't make this-
Right.
-the largest land use violation in the community, but-
Well, when you have all the big equipment sitting across the other side of the parking lot over there, it's hard to, it's almost like you're discriminating with, if you take a big green tractor, or a gray or a white semi-tractor trailer.
And, I mean, the-
Being the devil's advocate, you know, it's, but I don't know how or what to do.
You know, the historic use of part of that property has been for vehicle repair. The problem has been that it was discontinued. And again, in our ordinance, because it was discontinued, you lose that grandfather right because of its discontinuance. I mean, if it would've operated up until within a year of the new operator coming in, I probably would've been more inclined to say, okay, the grandfather clause allows you to continue. It's not perfect, but it allows you to continue. But that use had been discontinued, and-
I think there was maybe some health issues and stuff there that it made it a little bit more difficult to keep up on, on the owner's side of things, too.
Well, I mean, and clearly-
It's kinda from what my dad said, anyway.
The conversation that we had tonight on the Brewsters is no different than the conversation that we've had consistently here, which I happen to agree with, which is, you know, let's try to work these things through in a reasonable way if we can, and that's what we're gonna try in this instance, too. So we'll keep after it, see what happens, it's in process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is adjourn.
Is that what we adjourn?
I've got a motion by Mr. Price and Mr. Duden, actually.
I'll second it then.
Okay. Mr. Duden will second it. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.